All right, I'd like to call to order the Village of Marvins Park Recreation Greenways Board Meeting here on Tuesday, September 8th at 4:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is to determine a quorum and with myself, Christina Colt, Bob Nunnenkamp, and our council liaison, Kim Vandenberg, I do determine that we do have a quorum. Item number three is the adoption of the agenda, so we have a pretty light agenda here today, mainly focused on the landscaping, but any questions, concerns, or changes to the agenda?
Not for me.
Do I hear a motion on the table to adopt the agenda as written?
To move.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 You guys are so good at that now, I love it. It's like so moved.
Cop, cop, better cop.
Oh, I love it.
Next item on the agenda, number four, is the adoption of our minutes from September 1st. These were in our original packet that went out. Anybody have any questions or changes, modifications to be made to those? Then do I hear a motion on the table to adopt the September 1st 2020 PRG Board Meeting Minutes as they are written? Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next item is public comment and...
No one has signed up.
No one has signed up and no one online?
Someone online, do you want to speak?
Is there anyone online that wants to speak as part of public comment?
Sorry. One of those days.
Okay. Then we will move on to the item in new business items, which is item one, discussion and consideration of plants for roundabout landscaping. So, this is, we did set this meeting really for this goal. We had discussed to some degree the need for doing something at our last meeting, but, you know, given the number of challenges that we have through that discussion in regards to the availability of any sort of irrigation, the types of plants that we'd be able to do, things like that, I think we sent it back to staff with a focus on Derek reaching out and working with our partners at NC DOT to get a better understanding of, you know, what we can do there. There is a document that was provided to us in our package, if anyone had a chance to take a look at that with some different design and other information on acceptable type plants and things like that that NC DOT provided. But Derek, do you want to kind of take it from here or?
Not really, I want to just kind of leave it up to you guys to discuss and make decisions in dialogue. I just kind of wanted to provide some framework and I think Road Hit was going to provide some additional with the people from DOT that are there, but I did want to say that the pictures that I attached, those came from a former board member, chairperson, Site, Mary Site, and you all know her gardening experience, so she took what I had kind of thrown out as a suggestion as far as annuals, shrubs, grasses, and it gave some more specifics as far as a certain type, and I agree with her wholeheartedly on the ones she recommended. I think that will look good, grow well, will be very minimal as far as how much watering is needed, so I think you guys just need to kind of maybe discuss it, give it a final stamp of approval, and then we do need to just decide what we want to put in the middle.
I know.
Obviously, you know, what's allowed.
That's great, and I'm really excited that you did speak to Mary because I did consider that myself, and then I kind of held back, but she certainly does have, you know, immense experience in this area. When you did speak with her about it, Derek, did you speak specifically or focus to plants that wouldn't necessarily need to be irrigated or under the assumption that we were going to irrigate them either getting water to the site or having some sort of water brought there on an occasional basis as needed?
I didn't tell her either way specifically, but she just happened to mention when recommending those plants that they would not require a lot of water, just based on her experience with them, so I think they would go good with the setup that we have, you know, we can bring water to them as needed, but it shouldn't require a whole lot.
You really should only need it when you first plant them, what these got, the ones she planted.
With these types that she planted.
Except for the trees in the middle, I don't know anything about those trees in the middle, but the other three types of plants should not have a problem.
Are these deciduous?
Well, the muli grass will still have a, it'll still have its plumes and everything over the winter, and then you kind of cut them back and then they come back out again.
Right.
Yeah, the Lantana will go back to ground, the Lorda Petula, that's, yeah.
So, I guess one question I have, and one of the things that I know, and certainly DOT is concerned with, is the heights of things and stuff like that.
As a driver, so am I.
Yeah, and as a driver, but when I was going by, and I actually just took this on the way here too, there's already a pretty large dome on those. So, you know, I guess one of the things we'd have to consider is really how much dirt we'd have to take out in order to do these plantings.
Do you, what is the height?
And whether that factors into the height, is it the height above street level, is it the height above the dome, that's just something I hadn't considered, how high it was.
Is the height blocking the sight of other entrances coming into the, coming into the roundabout? That's what we're...
So, it's really from street level it's measured?
Yeah. The driving, yeah.
So, I bring that up just because as I've looked at it, driving past in the last couple of weeks, I really noticed that it's domed a lot higher than I really thought it was originally, you know, so.
Agreed.
Like, you're not, like, when I'm driving into the roundabout, I'm not looking straight ahead, I'm looking to the, like, I'm not looking that way, the cars aren't coming from straight ahead, they're coming from the left.
I'm watching these other people around.
Right? Like, that's my, like, the height to me, because nobody's coming straight at me, I'm not going straight in front of somebody.
Well, I mean, they should have been.
When I'm coming up Newtown from 16 anywhere here.
Yep.
I'm taking, because that road's not there. These people need to be able to see who's entering this roundabout, they need to be able to see who's coming so they can safely make that decision to pull out.
I know, but they're not going to, I'm not, I'm going to wait and see if they dip off here before I go.
There is nowhere to dip off, they're coming in and they're coming around, this is coming.
Because there's a two lane one there.
If I'm going from this house back towards 16, he's right off.
You got to see the inside turn lane.
These folks have just come, and they're coming fast, so this person needs to be able to see who's entering to whether he can make that decision to pull out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but they're not dipping off here, I mean, dipping off, I know, but I'm saying here.
Possibly, or they could be going up Marvin School.
Yeah, but I'm going to sit here and wait, because if I can, you want me to see if they're entering here before I go.
Correct.
Yeah. I'm not waiting that long there.
What is the height restriction that this house, forget about that we have a mound out there?
There's not a height restriction, we just don't want it completely blocked.
Oh, no, I don't want, I don't want to block it either, I'm just saying, like, I'm not looking straight through, I'm looking, like, to the left to see who's...
We don't want to...
I see what you're saying, I got you.
We don't want to totally obstruct that view.
I got you.
So, the idea...
Can we have a bush in here?
Yes.
I don't want it to be a great big bush that's going to completely get matured and completely obstruct my view of this.
Okay, so on this, on this thing, it says in the middle, a B is a monument.
Yeah.
Now, I've heard that we don't want monuments in case somebody goes straight through the thing.
Correct.
Okay, so no monument.
I've seen that happen in ballot contests, I know it happens.
Okay, so no monument.
And I don't know what A is.
A is a evergreen.
It says evergreen.
Yeah, like a holly, but I need to know what it is.
Like, what type of evergreen?
Because what we've got on this drawing is cherry trees, which are not evergreens.
Mm-hmm. Cherry trees?
These are cherry.
Japanese cherry trees.
Or emerald green arborvitae, is what I have here.
Can somebody walk me through this thing?
That's like a cherry, but small, you know?
We got one cherry tree, right?
No, it's actually, it looks like four.
It should be four, look at this one here, Bob, this one's probably better for you. So, here's the layout, so B used to be a monument, right?
But not, but not anymore.
A, A, A are four cherry trees or an emerald green arborvitae.
Which are the smaller arborvitae, but...
Are those like, are those like a little skinny?
They're a little skinnier, they're not the gigantic ones. The problem is, to his point, you can't see through them.
Yeah.
So, a cherry tree would probably be better.
The cherry tree is probably almost better.
Well, I'm thinking a deciduous tree, which is, you know, theoretically going to have a skinny trunk and a bigger top, and you'll see through that.
How about...
Four hundred.
That's what I mean, you'll see through, not in the top of the tree.
How do we feel about crepe myrtles?
Uh-uh.
I don't know.
Because there are too many in this area.
No, they're so pretty though.
Yeah, but there is a bug coming to get them soon.
I was about to say, I've never seen a crepe myrtle that was never covered in ants.
There is a bug coming to get them.
Bunches that aren't covered in ants.
Oh, me too.
So...
Okay, all right.
All I was going to say from the very beginning is the more native plants we can put in here that are tough, the better off we will be.
All right, so what are our options?
So, the tree is the problem.
With the cabbages.
Yes.
I don't think anybody wants to drive by these anywhere when they go dead.
Not great.
Then that leads you back to...
Evergreens.
Evergreens.
And because in the winter, I want to see green, I want to see something that reminds me of spring.
It's because it's so dull here.
Yeah.
I'm kidding, it's not dull.
But, you know, a balance of deciduous with evergreen or non-deciduous is fine, I just don't want to see us go...
So, it's like brown and dead and all that.
Go where it's just a brown hill and then...
Well, the grass will look nice, and the laurel petula will look nice even in the winter.
Which one's the laurel petula?
That is on the corner to me.
No, I know, but do I have like a live picture?
You have a picture.
Which one is it? Okay, I like that.
It doesn't look like this all the time.
No, I have these, they might work, and I like them.
Oh, yeah, they're great.
They're not native, but they're tropical.
But I like these, these are nice.
That's a native plant.
Don't these turn like red in the winter?
They're going to turn brown, but they're going to keep that really cool plume on them if we cut it down.
All right.
The laurel petal...
You don't like that, do you?
I'm fine.
This is no harm.
No, I'm not going to be arguing, I think on the laurel petal, we need to be sufficient to get them a little more, because they have...
You mean this one?
They have miniature laurel petals.
And ginormous ones.
And ginormous, and the miniature ones that are miniature, they're beautiful ones. Less maintenance.
So, my suggestion...
But you need more up there.
Okay, so my suggestion is let's start in the middle, and let's start knocking, just, let's just start picking them off, like, we know we can't do a monument, so do we want to do like a bigger, like, evergreen and then some little evergreens around it?
Gotcha.
Or, I mean, I don't know, or a...
How much?
Or a dogwood?
I think we might start with so many cherry trees.
How much radius are we talking about there?
Can I put Mike on the speakerphone for a minute to speak to some of the issues in the center and the layout that he did?
Sure.
Because he wants to just...
Is he the one that did this?
Yeah, he wants to make his point, just to give you a background on the schematic that you're seeing right now. Hey, Mike, you're on.
Go ahead.
Okay, the, from one side, we're talking about the side just the top plants, and actually, DOT, is there anybody there from DOT?
Yeah, Bruce Myers from Landscaping is here from DOT.
Hey, Bruce, this is Mike Walker.
Yeah.
Then you, I, you want to look, be able to see to the left when you enter, back to the, to the leg coming in there, and then back to the right, next leg, but you typically don't want to see the whole circle because it's just too much to, I just, I guess.
It's too much what?
It's just too much for somebody to try to visualize.
Okay, sure.
At one time, they don't, they don't need to see what's on the other side of the circle because that's not in their, in their path. What they need to see is to the left, back to the first leg, and then to the right as they're entering to the next leg right there. So, as far as looking across the center of the roundabouts, you're not going to be doing that.
Mike, these are three-legged, these are three-legged roundabouts, so you are going to have to look across them.
Excuse me?
These are three-legged roundabouts, you're going to have to look across them, at least at one of the legs.
And they're not...
Thank Newtown, thank Newtown Road from 16 going towards, going away from Providence Road, I'm having to look across the roundabout to see the next leg, to my left.
If you're going east on Newtown?
If I'm going west on Newtown, but either way, either way, either way on Newtown, I'm having to look across the, I'm having to look across the roundabout to see the other leg, to see the next leg.
There's two three-legged roundabouts.
Yeah, there's two three-legged roundabouts, yes, exactly right.
But the drawing that we have with the center, is that acceptable to you, Bruce? If those are just like pencil holly, something like that, I know the monument's a whole different issue, breakaway and all that.
Yeah, I'm not tickled with a monument, it didn't sound like they were here.
They're not doing a monument.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's keep going with like, so we need something in the middle then.
So, but we don't, it doesn't have to be a tree, it could be a shrub.
Yeah, right?
Yeah?
Well, you...
I'm just saying, and we have a lot more evergreen versions in that section.
Okay.
All the LX, I L E X, all of those are going to be, well, most of them...
Where am I looking here?
This is on the shrub page.
Or the shrub page, okay.
Those are all going to be...
All right, I'm going to have you Google and start pulling up some of these things so we can see what they look like.
We need to figure out what A is going to be.
That's what we're talking about right now.
Decide what is going underneath the As.
Well, G is a mulch.
Yeah.
So, I wouldn't be planting anything.
If I could also, though, with DOT here, I just wanted to clarify, there was some question that when we had the roundabout bits built, that there was supposed to have been, number one, some conduit for potential irrigation, but then also there had to be some sort of modification of drainage or something?
All that's been done?
Understood.
Oh.
I just want to understand what that means as we're putting stuff in there, where that drainage exists.
I mean, there was a drain that was, Christina said that where the drain was stuck. Christina!
Just because I want to understand that.
Yeah, I have no idea.
I mean, obviously, we'll see where the conduit is because it's sticking up.
Okay.
Like, the roundabouts where we added the drains, do you know where in the roundabout they added them?
The conduit?
No, the drains.
I don't, Mike, does Mike not know?
I don't know. Mike, do you know?
What's that?
Where the drains are in the roundabouts?
The subdrains.
Yeah, yeah, there's actually two, there's one on the side going back toward Town Hall, on each colored side, I mean, roundabout, and then there's one going out on the side on Newtown.
You say one coming towards Town Hall and one coming out the other side on each roundabout?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to know where they are as we're...
We've got plenty to add, I mean, if you want to add, you know, irrigation or power or whatever, we've got conduit in place.
And the conduit's sticking up, right?
It's what?
The conduit's sticking out of the ground so we'll see it when we're planting, correct?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yes, on the outfalls, you'll see a spash pad, and there's other conduits that's running around.
Okay.
And the, 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 that's pointing down, down the drain, it'll get cut off the ground level whenever we can, when we're going down the stairs.
Okay, did that answer that, John?
Yeah, because I'm assuming if we have to take the top off that crown to make an area that's more suitable for planting.
Feel like there are besides, so like, as it's spring, it's not going to be, the crops are going to be on the side somewhere, so if we have to cut the top off the cupcake, it'll be fine, or the muffin, whatever you want to say. Okay, so you guys keep saying deciduous, I don't know what that means, I'm not like...
Deciduous leaves are mulch.
Okay, they're...
It's not going to be greenology.
Bad connection here.
So, of the shrubs, some of the hollies are options that are evergreen, you see the E there? Some of the hollies, and that's kind of all that's on the first page.
What does a Chinese holly look like, or a Japanese holly? Do you guys like any of those? Like, I don't know, I know a Nellie Stevens, that's the only one I really...
So, my only, my only comment was to try to stay away from the non-natives and get the natives.
Okay, so I would, that would mean Chinese and Japanese?
You generally got to give away, but you never know.
The other is, if we do native hollies, we need to ensure that they bury, not all hollies do.
You have to have a male and a female.
So, we want to make sure that they bury.
But wherever you buy it from...
Did you ever think it'd be this complicated, Karen?
Yeah, wherever you buy them from, they will know.
They'll know.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
There should be a criteria for it, so.
But it should, he's right, because they will not get buried if they don't, and to give you an idea, this is what one, one of the ones that is not evergreen, it's deciduous.
Hold on, tell Road Hit, he'll pull it up here so we can see.
Oh, look up Winterberry.
Mike's calling, Rob.
Look up Winterberry.
I'll call him back in a second.
Winterberry holly?
Yeah, it's...
Winterberries are deciduous.
Exactly, but look what it looks like in the winter, it's really cool looking, if you look for some pictures.
What does it look like in the winter?
That bush right there that has no leaves but all those red berries on it.
Oh, I love that there.
Is that cool?
Uh, cool.
So, in the summer, it looks like, let's get it buried.
I don't like it!
It doesn't matter what I like, I mean, this is a team event, this is a...
On the back of this page, you've got a couple other evergreen shrubs, juniper, wax myrtle, which gets pretty big, I've got some of those, but they stay green.
They do.
Osmanthus, which smells really good, but who's going to ever know that?
No.
And Viburnum, some of those are evergreen, and we'd have to, to Bob's point, you'd have to pick a very specific one.
And the great thing about Viburnum is they have a wax leaf, they're a high shing leaf, they're fast growing, but they do require a lot of training.
Yeah, see, I, that's...
Like you should know.
Can you Google that one?
Like you should know Viburnum.
Viburnum. Yeah, there's five.
Viburnum?
Viburnum.
And they're beautiful.
V I B U R N.
It's on your top choice there.
All right.
The problem is, there's probably a thousand different kinds.
I like the pink one.
That's, yeah, not one of the options, probably.
I mean, that's a, that's a, and it's going to be deciduous.
I think the most beautiful is the sandal, they actually come trees, it's very incredible.
Oh, that's pretty.
Oh, that's very pretty.
But I doubt it's...
They don't need the requirement of DOT.
No, that's going to be huge, and you cannot see there.
And they get these massive black blooms on them.
Is there any worry that we've made something that's so gorgeous that it's distracting? I know that's crazy, but, no, that's not a problem.
No, that's not a problem.
I ran into your, your roundabout when it was so glorious, I had a tough problem. Then on the other, if you look at trees, if you want something taller in the middle, and you want evergreen, you have pines and arborvitae.
Those are ugly.
I think...
Well, I disagree that they're ugly, I understand what you mean.
Eastern red cedar's a name.
Eastern, that's right, and actually, the arborvitae's not too far removed from...
I like the church.
Sort of native.
Calmia would be another, another shrub.
Which is that one?
Calmia of Mountmore, it would be...
Will it grow here? It'll grow here, though?
Yeah.
Mountmore?
Not very well.
Yeah, that's what...
But it is a name.
Oh, absolutely, but it's very unhappy.
No, it's going to be more, I know you're trying to... The night is too hot here. But a red bud tree would be another native.
How would it stand just that full-on sun, though?
Great.
Mine don't like it.
They do great.
Red bud?
Yeah.
I mean, they're gorgeous.
They'll even take the afternoons.
Austin, get everybody, what's a red bud going there?
They'll even take the afternoons, that's what I got. I've got them all around my house, yeah.
What's a what?
But it is deciduous.
Red bud, red bud.
Or not, it's deciduous, but it's also a native, but if we have deciduous trees, which we would...
They're gorgeous.
We can change the...
Fun.
And you can get varieties that will stay a little smaller or...
Please don't get a purple one, don't get a purple one.
I would suggest...
Get a hot pink one.
I would suggest...
Well, that's what color they are when they bloom, in the spring.
That ruby falls is beautiful, and it doesn't get very tall, but I would suggest, if you do a tree, let's make that...
The monument.
Yeah, you let her be and forget about A.
I agree with, one red bud in the middle, I like that very much.
And I could, I could agree to that, because it's not going to block names.
It's got beautiful leaves, it does that for a little while, and then the shape of it, even in the winter, the shape of that tree is gorgeous.
But then it's...
Can I make one call in?
Brown.
Well, I think trees, they shed, but the thing about red bud, and it's going to be beautiful, believe me, they're gorgeous trees, but I think everybody needs to understand they also have these long pod shells on them for a long period of time. And that's an ornamental feature to the, to the red bud.
I like you, Bruce.
They are native?
It's got a seed pod, thing that looks like, it looks like a bean pod. It looks like a bean pod, absolutely.
Because it is, yeah, they're...
What's the negative of that?
Well, they're not, we had them in our front yard, and we took it out just because it became very unattractive. Once the blue, when it fell off, it doesn't shed that pot.
Oh, okay.
They hang for a very long time.
So, what are our options, an eastern red bud or a cherry tree?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would go with the eastern red bud.
See, I agree, I love red bud on his story, and everybody's got cherry trees.
I don't.
Well, no.
I got native.
I got all crepe myrtles, so.
Those people, you know, if you see one.
I like this because it's native and it's going to make a whole bunch of little animals happy.
Okay, so let's...
The ones that make it a crossroad.
Okay, so let's do that B, so let's make that B. Johnny, go with that?
What's it?
B, we'll make B the, the red bud.
Okay.
Then no A.
No A, yeah.
Hold on, why don't we do, why don't we do some like little shrubs that will look pretty in the wintertime?
Well, you could put in beeper hollies.
What about a camilla?
Are they huge?
No, 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 they do not like full sun.
God, I have them in my yard and they love it.
No.
They are like in full sun.
Do they get after them sun?
Uh-huh.
God, I'm amazed.
Yeah, and they bloom, 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 they're...
Are you sure the camillas, when do they bloom?
In the winter.
Wow, never heard of one.
They're blooming, they're blooming.
Ours is, they're...
Oh, God, that's huge.
That is huge.
I was thinking something smaller.
They're ones in the fall and the winter.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was saying for in the winter.
Something teeny, I mean, something like a foot high.
But that's how big my camillas are, they're like this big.
Bro, go back to the, there is dwarf beeper holly, they are, they're not fast growing, they're easy to maintain, and they've got a beautiful red...
They do, they do get married.
They get buried, and they're easy...
Okay, there you go, there you go. A?
Because we don't want them to get too big.
Okay, so A is going to be...
Can we move to one that's native instead of that, or is that, is there such a thing as...
I just recommended that, I'm not saying do it, I know what they are.
I don't know, I think that...
Do we have a holly shrub that's little, Bruce?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a holly?
That's small, that's native.
How do they look in the winter?
I think there's a...
With some red berries?
No, these leaves are all here. Service berry, but it's going to drop weeds.
No, a holly, that's...
Yeah, I'm taking deciduous, but Alex O'Paken, it's a, it's a, it's a big tree.
That's big.
Yeah.
But is there not a version of verticillata or vomitoria, I know isn't a great name, that is a small one?
Yeah, but the vomitoria native, it'll get six feet tall if left unchecked, yes, it is a dwarf, but it'll get big if left unchecked.
Yeah, we don't want somebody that has to go out there and cut them.
Those will too if left unchecked, as long as we keep them, as long as they stay down, okay. Well, we have dwarf at our entrance, and admittedly, we had small ones put in, but they're, they're not fast growing, and they're easily trimmed up, they lowly trim, they do have a berry. They wouldn't have to stay for a year, yeah.
So, any of them would be, would?
Yes, yes.
So, we have two options, we can put something small that won't stay that way, but, I mean, every couple of years, we're going to have to whack it back, okay, so, or we don't put anything at all, are those our, are those two choices?
I think you need a little something around the bottom.
I do too, have some green.
Yeah. Does it have to be native?
No, no.
So, we have 15...
What's more bling to be out of that? What's more bling to be out of that?
That's gonna come into play as we talk about these plants.
Say that again?
Well, we have a budget.
Well, that was my other reason about camillas, they are wickedly expensive as well.
So we'll have to determine, Bruce, the number of plants within that.
How expensive were those, Christina?
Camillas?
Mm-hmm.
It, it depend, different varieties cost more, I seen a hundred dollars for a plant.
So you're, you're just speaking of something like an understory in this.
Yeah, to give it some, to give it some color.
How do you spell, how do you spell?
See, he's got it.
Flower. Say bush, flower.
I'm getting a bunch of people named Camilla.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Camelia, okay.
Yeah, but everything, I know, I kinda, like, um, Bob said, they're, uh, wow.
Wait, what?
They do not like sun at all.
Well, just, just tossing that option, what about like a, a daylily, daffodil, sedum mix?
Oh, you can.
No.
Well, there's sedums. Well, but it, that would give, that would give you three different seasons of flowers. Daffodils would be February-ish, daylilies would be in the summer, and sedums would be now.
I see what you're saying, you want something in the winter with that.
My only problem with sedums, at least the ones that we have in a, a garden in Monroe, they, they do not, they don't play well.
Alright, then let's go back and let's.
Bruce, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
For us, anyway, at least for me, and I think most, the magnates of the roundabout's gonna be a.
It's gonna be minimal.
It's gonna be a, we wanna, you know, I'd like to see as many non deciduous plants as we can, but also low magnates.
Sure.
And, uh, and I understand what Christina wants to do in terms of naming, but I agree with her.
Yeah.
But under that red bud, I just think a dwarf, uh, beford holly.
Go back to that tab.
Would look really good.
That one.
Depending on how they're planted.
And that's the one that gets red berries in the winter?
It does, yeah.
If you get the right boys and girls together.
Okay, so then, what's up, to make sure we do that? Are we good with that?
In terms of characteristics, that'll, every holly I've ever seen takes full sun, but ours doesn't get full sun.
They'll do better.
They should do better in full sun than.
They'll also stay more compact that way, right, if they get full sun? They'll get so leggy.
Okay. Are we good with that?
Yeah, hold on.
Christina?
Yeah, it's fine.
Alright.
So that, that we're talking about the A.
A.
So are we expecting them to grow together and make a big ring or something around this tree? I know, well, but I mean, they will grow bigger than those little.
No, I think, I think you just kinda keep them.
You keep four separate ones.
Yeah, you keep them low.
Balls?
Yeah.
We just have to tell people how to cut them back, they will have to cut them, they're gonna do this, but if you want them to be a ball, they're gonna have to be true to be.
Well, and I have a, I have like a, like I, I have a, it may actually be that, I don't know, but it kinda looks like that. But they're like spaced apart, and they've started to grow together, and my yard guy just kinda came and did like a, like a box to them, and just shaped them up and.
A lot of people are putting in winter, you know, a winter green box would, I like the holly better, it beries.
Yeah.
I, I don't love, with the rest of what we've got over here, let's get to that, but with all of this, if that's little balls, it's gonna look weird, because none of this is. This is all very open, doing its own thing.
I thought this was more of a hedge around.
That's what I'm asking, are you wanting it to grow in a circle or?
That's what I was thinking, but that's not everything.
We will need more than, than with this.
Oh, absolutely, oh, is this the number of plants?
So, so you're, so you're thinking about it as around the circumference of it?
Of the tree, that's what, that's what I thought he was saying.
Okay, I mean, that's good.
More connected.
So basically, where there's a G, make that an A, right?
Yeah, G's or A's as well.
G's or A's.
And, and, and they're on that outer perimeter.
Yep.
And in my mind, it's easier to cut that back.
Yeah.
It's easier to contain that, cuz you've already, it's already laid out there for you, that circle's already laid out.
Bruce, what size container do you recommend when you're putting in your plants?
We, we would always just deal with a three gallon on those hollies, and then on that tree, I would, I would do a fifteen gallon.
Yeah.
Cool.
So it's, it's, it's big enough, but yet you can still.
Yeah, got it.
Alright, so one, okay, so then mulch? Everybody's going with mulch?
Yep.
G? Okay, do we need to talk about color of mulch? Brown, red?
As God intended mulch to be, whatever color that is. No color in it.
Okay, F, we have.
Now, excuse me, just real quick, G's have become A's.
G's have become A's.
But they're spelled G in the.
And then we're still gonna have D in there.
Many, many will come for what we wanna do.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, F, we have is turf grass.
Now, what kind of turf grass?
Well, council thinks that river rock would be better than turf grass.
What does Bruce think?
Well, I, I, I thought that as well, but then where I see all of these plantings.
Yep.
Or at least on here, I see them saying the river rock there.
I think you're gonna make that mulch.
I would make that mulch.
I don't know if you want the river rock here, uh, so you're saying this would be mulch, and this would be river rock.
All the pines need to be mulched, and then do the river rock.
Sorry to interrupt, but before we go on with river rock, we have an ordinance that has to do with roadway landscaping, number eleven.
Is this ours?
It is our ordinance.
So we can always change it?
We could change it, but it currently says, number eleven, loose stone, rock, gravel prohibited on public parkways.
Is that a parkway?
Uh, well, any public road is, I guess, a parkway, I don't think that the word parkway really matters there.
But doesn't that mean the road surface itself?
But we're talking about the median here, like, anything in, like, in the landscaping area of the road.
But that's not public.
The DOT road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, the roundabout.
I mean, walking about in here is not expected, is it?
No, no, but that's not really public, cuz it's a public road.
Look at him trying to find a look on.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're trying to.
That's not how I'm interpreting that, uh, ordinance there, Robert.
I do have a question on the stone.
Maybe it says.
People visualize, and you see a lot of these white stones in landscaping, I hope that's not.
No, 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 like the big, no, 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 like the big, like river rock, like the big, like brown.
Oh, like, like we have at the garden.
No, that'd be pretty.
For the, Mr. Dry Creek bed area.
Yeah, like I have them in my yard to help with like here, like it's, they're really pretty, but the big, not the white little, no.
No, I like that. And you don't wanna walk on that, I mean, you can, but you don't wanna.
But see, it's not loose stone or gravel, it is compounded.
That's a big rock.
I know what you're talking, you're, you're, it's, it's like extra large or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, they're huge, like I have them, I have them, yeah, they're like rounded.
It does say in the top, the following information needs to be as general guidelines, so.
Okay.
I guess we don't have.
We can just recall.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, but, I, I wish I had a picture of my backyard, but I have like, they're like, they're, they're big, and they're just.
Is this in the subdivision part?
This is in, uh, this is in our landscape.
I'll find you, yeah. And then, no, I'm not, we're not, we're not thinking these little teeny, no, 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 no.
Absolutely, cuz that was gonna say it's a native there.
No, 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 no.
Okay, so the G's are now rocks, correct?
No, G's is still mulch. F is now going to be.
Giant river rock, not tiny.
No, giant ones.
So think dry creek bed, don't wanna walk on.
Yeah, giant.
River rock.
River rock.
Then we got mulch.
Yeah, and I think mulch around the plants is a much better idea than.
Me too.
Bruce, you're fine with river rocks, right? Yeah.
The other thing about the.
About boulders.
Right, right.
Like, like big, like they're like.
A flat, a flat.
Yeah, they're like rounded, yeah.
Nothing that's gonna impede traffic.
No.
Impede the toll, okay.
Well, they better not be driving on it.
I know, I'm gonna get mad.
I swear.
He'll be out there policing them.
I will, I'll be like, you get, get off my roundabout.
That's right.
Okay, G's are still gonna be mulch, now we're to D's. Grasses.
Muley. What? Muley grass, that pink stuff.
Yeah.
I like that, that's pretty.
Yeah.
Okay, Bob doesn't like it.
No, I'm good.
And it's a, it's a native, it's happiness.
Can you with the?
Polls in trouble.
Back to the line, and, and there's a white kind, and there's a pink kind, it looks like Miss Mary's side, uh, spec, the, the pink one, which, you know, whatever, it's great, either way. Either way is good.
I'm looking.
So that's the D's.
Well, here's a picture with a kingsnake in it.
Oh, no, good God.
Oh, God.
No, kingsnakes are good.
I know, I just don't like snakes.
Even though some snakes are good, I don't want anyone near me.
I let her go.
So D, M U H L's grass.
Oh.
Yeah, so that's muley grass.
So like, more like this, like more like that size.
Okay, that's muley.
That size, and that's even some bigger.
Yeah, what I've got is bigger than that.
Yeah, but like, at least that big.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's perfect.
The one that's doing, what is this doing in the winter again?
Well, muley grass?
Yeah.
So we should have a picture for you, mine just doesn't.
Okay, hold on.
Come on, here, look up muley grass in the winter, I'll bet you can find something.
Okay. So, F, G is where we are, grasses, what does it say?
Okay, you see these guys over here?
Oh, yeah, those are them.
On the left?
They get bad.
It's gonna be, but it's gonna be very airy, and, and we've got it at the other garden, at Mary's Garden in the park.
Does it turn color, like, we have, well, they're, you know, it's at the beach, so maybe it's, it's a.
So it blooms right about now, and it, that bloom's gonna stay on, and it's gonna stay kinda pinkish until frost, God knows when that is anymore. So it could be December, January before that.
So it's like super green in like the spring, summer?
It's, it's a real spiky kind of leaf.
Yeah, and then now it starts to, okay, I like that.
So it's got a, a lot of architectural interest, it's just a really interesting looking plant.
Are you good with that?
It'll poke your eye out if you.
John?
Yeah.
So, so, are you good with that? Okay, so.
Beautiful and native.
D is going to be a M U H L Y, Y grass, and we want pink. Okay.
And it's gonna get, if this is the ground, what you say, about like that?
Yeah.
About, yeah, a, a good plant that gets watered and, and treated nicely, not like at my house, my.
Right, okay.
Um, then the yellow is Chapel Hill, um.
Wait, is that C, the Laura?
Petal.
Laura petalum is C.
Is that C, is that the yellow one?
No, that's the pink one, that one, right there.
This is this one, oh, okay, I see what we're doing here, I like that.
And there's about.
There's about three billion kinds of those.
Yeah, but there's, they're really popular, but I'm, again, I focus on the miniature.
Okay, so this is the Laura?
Petal.
Pet.
Yeah, he's supposed to lock, rock a little bit.
Show me.
Laura, Laura petalum.
P, L O R?
Jeez.
L O R?
Bruce, do you have any particular types you like?
Not really.
Yeah, I don't know it well.
I would prefer a dwarf.
Okay, yeah, I think so.
We'll say dwarf.
It'll get big.
Yeah, I do.
And we wanna say pink?
I don't think you have much of a dwarf. Well, there looks like there's a white one, but.
I don't want white.
No, red are, they're beautiful.
Red or red, pink, whatever?
Yeah.
They are.
But we're looking for dwarf and pink flower.
Like there's a dwarf.
There you go, jazz hands. I would like that.
Seeing that pretty?
But it's Chinese, it's not native.
Well, it's not native.
Okay. All right.
Is native completely out of the...
We're trying to be diversified.
We're being inclusive, not negative.
Inclusive. No, seriously, there are.
More than it's gateway to the world.
It is. We only have an R.
That, that could be our problem.
That's right.
I live with jazz hands would better.
Well, we need to look at the specs on that because jazz hands could be, you know, a ten foot tall thing. I don't know. But we can look it up.
Full sun.
Well, it'll be happy then.
Twelve to thirty-six.
Yeah, twelve to thirty-six.
Perfect. Is that good?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right.
And it's a nice spread.
Mine's got a one star review.
Oh, that's probably from the website.
Yeah, it's probably the website.
Okay, jazz hands, go back up.
Looks like it grows here.
Look at it. Oh, it is native, or maybe not native.
No, it's not native.
That just needs to happen here.
Go back down, I mean, up to the top, sorry, Rohit. Jazz hands.
Dwarf. Pink Laura petalum.
Pink. Okay. Chinese French flower. Okay? And, but why do we like the placement where it is?
Yes.
C, 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 C?
C, C.
C, 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 so, so six Cs.
I hope y'all like pink.
I love pink.
Okay, boys, get a pink roundabout. We'll make the next one look...
I would rather say that's light red.
Oh, okay.
Bob, it's pink.
Well, we're about to give you something that's not pink.
I still like it, I think it's good.
So the next one is Chapel Hill lantana.
Is that E? Is that, are those the annuals?
That's it. That's, but she spec Chapel Hill is a lighter yellow. It's not that garish yellow I have at my house that is almost green.
Chapel Hill, is it these ones here?
I like that. Reformation Camellia. I'm just teasing.
Please stop. Chapel Hill lantana.
Bob, I'm gonna tell Judy.
I'm an old man.
T A N A, there you go. Okay, that is not what it looks, it's lighter than that. That's kind of...
I like that.
It's a lighter yellow than the kind of gold that you see on cheap sale at Lowe's. Um, we've got this at the, at the garden.
Now, wait, this describes it as an annual?
It, it is, but it comes back. It, it used to be an annual when we were in zone seven B, but now that we're in zone A, moving into eight B. I don't even know what that means.
It means it's warmer now. I understand what her words are, but I don't know what she's...
It means that it's warmer now than it used to be.
Okay. Christina, I don't understand what you're saying right now.
Zones are important.
Okay.
You are in eight A zone.
Here.
Okay.
We are roughly...
So we're getting hardier or less hardy?
Hardier is however you want to look at it. It's not as cold as it used to be. So we don't have as hard frost, and we have a later frost.
Okay. So they will be hardier.
If you put a plant from the west coast that says full sun.
Yeah, it will die.
It will die here.
Do not buy plants that are from somewhere other than around here.
Full sun, you know, in Newport Beach, California is different than full sun in Charlotte.
Oh, yeah.
Or even in the mountains, full sun in the mountains.
All right, go to the, go to the top for me.
Well, he's on Laura petalum, there you go.
So go to the top there, what's this guy called? So, so we just go with the Chapel Hill?
Are you guys playing with the yellow? With the yellow and pink together?
Oh, absolutely.
I like the yellow and pink together.
Well, there's that, it's got both. And it is a Chapel, that's a newer one.
Oh, can we do that? That looks pretty.
It's a nice plant.
Okay.
And here's the thing about lantana.
Are you good with Bruce?
Are you sure they go?
What's the size, does that one still say?
I do have mine. They're not supposed to, you're absolutely right.
Yeah. And that's what, we have them at the beach and they look ugly in the winter, but they just...
Oh, no, they'll die back to nothing in the winter, but that...
You gotta cut them back.
We'll still have Laura petals.
Yep.
Yep.
And we'll have the, the shrubs.
Oh, if it says partial shade, they're, they're full, they'll just survive in that. They, they like full blind sun, and you do not have to water them.
All right, go back to the top for me, Rohit. Okay, I'm gonna go hardy.
And I would say...
Lantana.
Well, it's lantana camara. That'll, lantana camara is the name of it, or camara. Um, the problem might be is finding that particular kind. It might be a little hard to find. Chapel Hill pink huff is what you're looking for.
Otherwise, I don't know if you'll see. It's gotta be a dwarf.
On, on principle, I would not get that.
The one I have in my house is more dwarf petalum, it is red.
See, that's so pretty, look how pretty it is. Aww.
But you know, we're gonna, we're gonna say that a bunch of guys designed this.
Yep.
She and I have nothing to do with it.
Yep.
I'm good with that, so, okay, so...
Isn't that pretty?
It's the breast cancer over there.
That is wrong.
Okay, so those are our Es.
So it...
So what?
What's it blended with?
What do you mean?
Well, you got yellow.
Yeah, and pink.
Okay. Does this bloom two colors?
It'll kind of start out one way, because mine is a red and, and yellow, and it starts out really, really red.
Does it color fade into other colors?
No, it's like the outer, as it gets bigger, the outside changes the color, the inside stays the other color.
Oh, okay.
It's...
It's pretty.
Well, you can see that the one in the top corner over there, where the yellow's in the middle and the pink's on the outside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the C is dwarf petalum we talked about.
Jazz hands dwarf pink.
Yep. So do we, um, if they can't find that kind, are you okay with planting Chapel Hill?
Chapel Hill, yeah.
Okay, good. Just that way somebody's not running all over. I've never seen that one for sale.
That'll look pretty good.
They can find it, I bet they can find it. It'll look nice. Okay, Bruce, are you good with all that?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're gonna have butterflies going absolutely bonkers.
Love it.
That is good.
That's wonderful. That's good for our, for our marsh.
Exactly, why you think I'm going all native over here? Exactly.
Are, are y'all gonna draw up a master plan that's...
This is not native.
Two percent.
To who?
To me.
Uh, that's your master plan right there.
I think it'll be that times four, essentially, right?
Yeah, we gotta fix the middle.
Yeah.
But I mean, y'all, y'all tweak this and make some changes.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll get, yeah, we'll fit, we'll fix it.
Okay, that's, and that's, and that's all I need.
Okay.
Oh.
So you guys have to approve it?
Yeah, then I, I'll, I'll prove it, I'll submit the, the permit to y'all.
Okay.
To the town of Marv, or village of Marvin, I'm sorry.
Yep. So, because my plan is to take this to council tonight and have them approve it, as long as you guys approve it.
That's why you're taking notes.
That's why I'm taking lots of notes. Um, so then if we can get that approved, then we'll get that to you.
Are you amending the agenda tonight?
I surely am. Um, all right, talk to Christina about it.
Could be a couple topics, I guess.
I'll, no, I'll add it at the top and, and so people can listen if they want to stay on. Um, we'll approve it, we'll get it to you, then you, and then we'll, simultaneously, we'll probably give it to Derek so he can go ahead and start. Because then you don't see anything wrong with this, right? Okay, so then we'll probably go ahead and give it to Derek so he can start.
I just, I just need it shifted to where it's not gonna... Where, where the, especially the...
Laura petalum?
Laura petalum are gonna block it, block a, a site. So it, you know, it...
So do you want us to put those in the middle and then have like, so like, like more here and then have all the other stuff? No?
I think that'd break up the path. And these are dwarf, and Bruce, and I mean, if we maintain them...
Well, three feet.
Shouldn't, you know, that shouldn't affect...
Like he was pointing out earlier, there's a major cross.
Yeah, in that, that...
I'm thinking we gotta cut that.
Well, we were talking about...
I wanna bring that down.
As it does, as long as y'all do that, that'll be... With Laura petals, you're down at the bottom of that, aren't you?
Yeah, but it depends on where that cross is. I mean, look here. It depends on where the cross is.
Yeah.
Where the Laura petalums are.
That's right.
Petalum is four to five. Well, they get three feet tall.
Well, yeah, but if I'm sitting in a car.
I know. Yeah, you should be above them.
Oh, huh?
Yeah, but to John's point, if he drives a truck.
In your truck, you ought to be behind him. If I was in his car, I don't know.
To John's point, though.
Tim, you're not looking at anybody. You're just getting it plugged in now.
I'm not looking, I'm like, no, he's coming, I'm going, let's go.
Yeah, he's, yeah, remember this part. It's a big dome out there.
It's a big dome right now. We gotta kind of...
We're gonna take off the top.
We're gonna take some of that coffee dirt out, any anybody crap.
It's at least a four foot range.
Yeah, it's crazy.
It is.
Oh, it seems more than that.
It's a huge picture, man.
It doesn't look that way, I mean, when you're...
Well, you see somebody out there mowing the grass, that's how I noticed it.
Yeah, because they're like...
Yes, they look like mountain goat.
Yeah, mountain goat.
John, when we leave this as is, she goes to council with it. If we find out that Laura petalum's gonna interfere and don't get an approval, whatever, we'll just relocate plants.
Well, we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the, the muley grass is gonna be as tall as a Laura petalum, maybe a little taller.
But you're gonna be able to see through those.
Yeah.
No, you can't.